Okay, so we are supposed to be having our Finance Committee meeting this evening. The Chair has announced that it is canceled because the Comptroller is not here. These are the two members of the Finance Committee right now.
There shall be no bullying, kissing, clapping, cheering, shouting, or other forms that represent this type of conduct. This type of conduct is considered disruptive to the meeting. Public comment is a very important part of the meeting, however, it must be conducted in a certain manner. Shouting is prohibited. Personal attacks which may cause disruption are also prohibited. In general, a Chair may correct any conduct which is disruptive to the meeting. The Chair makes a final decision whether the conduct is disruptive. This is not debatable. There may be other ways to challenge the Chair's decision. However, arguing with the Chair is not one of those ways. Some Congressmen may choose to offer unsubstantiated or unproven claims or opinions. As part of the meeting, City Council members do not respond from their comment. This does not mean the commenter's claims or opinions are true. The only thing that it means is that this particular meeting is not the proper venue to address the commenter's claims or opinions. And sometimes, when they feel as if they are not being heard, the real issue may be that the person is attempting to be heard in the wrong venue. Municipalities should strive for expectancy and stability and perform at all times. All participants can assist the meeting by not engaging in disruptive conduct. Our next item on the agenda is the Education Commission's pledge allegiance. That's where you be so happy.
Yes, Father, we thank you this evening. We come before you in this day. We thank you for your grace, your mercy, your love, and your kindness. We thank you for your patience, Father. God may ask for your blessings, all the good blessings we need. God allow us the spirit of unity, of unity, come together. God will bring glory to this community. God will make you more than just a member of the community. What you brought us from, you can praise, as we should say.
...of the United States of America, and of the Republic, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is the Comptroller Report. This comes to my attention then. Our Comptroller is actually stuck at an airport. However, I would like for the public to first of all be aware that there is, and you can request a FOIA copy of the financial report that he has submitted. And I will just read cash balances from that report. Estated, the general fund, $200,000. MFT, $331,893.7. Commuter parking, $18,692.87. Pace Plus, $855,11. Debt service, $1,891,171.45. Water, $1,501,213.10. Dixie City Tiff, $1,71,498.73. Dixie Square Tiff, $201,972.18. Seven Street Tiff, $204,26,775.14. Creston Business Park, $1,47,561.42. RPO Business Park, $243,397.64. Economic Development, $10,232.15. Dixie Court Tiff, $455,124.72. And Dixie Court Tiff, excuse me, the Arco Tiff, excuse me, $1,365,546.47. total of 11. Then, $702,543.42. Anyone else has any interest as far as this report is concerned? You are free to request it and submit a FOIA if you'd like to see it. Sure, we can answer this later.
Where, can you find the Comptroller's report online?
Well, this report will be online. And once again, if you want to have a copy, you can FOIA a copy of it as well.
I have another question for you.
Yes.
April's here today for 2024. If we did look at expenditures by department, we see that miscellaneous appropriations is about 10.1%. And I know that those are funds that are unrestricted. I wanted to know specifically, what do you use in that 10.1% too? How's that, or what's that going to allocate to?
So once again, I'm not the Comptroller, I'm not the CP. But also, these questions were not asked prior to the meeting. So again, we had the packet prior to that point in time, so that is out of order.
Point of order, can you?
Sure, we can answer this.
Thank you, Mr. President. This Thursday, July 4th, Independence Day. And following on Friday, July 5th, the office, as I know, I saw the Facebook was closed. The packet was received on Monday, the first. So then, allowing, I would say, three days for review. And unfortunately, I didn't get those questions sent over, but that's my thought to ask. It would be appropriate in this day.
I understand. And we've already changed a lot of yours, once again, I can't answer that question for you at this time. Next item.
Hi, I'm sorry. So I actually have to close this section down because I clicked the wrong date. You can see up there, it's June 24th, and today's July 8th. So I'm going to close down this section and reopen it up. So if you could just give me some few minutes so I can get that taken care of, okay?
Next item on the agenda is Special Announcements. The court has indicated there are none. Next item, six, this executive session. Do we have a, um? Sure, that's the first one.
I will give you a line number or here, it says sign in and show that I have already. Do I sign in again?
Yeah. I don't have it, but look, I'm saying it. On the other, um?
Sign in button? Yep.
Are we on the same page, man?
Yeah, we're on the, uh...
Special announcement?
Yeah, we're on the, uh...
Just want to let you know, this is our fault today. The elder persons are doing pretty good with the system. Just a reminder for the elder persons, when it's time to vote, there's a 10 seconds. Remember that if you did motion, you most possible vote, okay? Within those 10 seconds. If you did not, you have to put, did not vote, okay? Just make sure.
Good job, dude, good job.
Thank you for your patience. Our next item on the executive session. There is going to be a session or return to open session. Next item is the date approval of minutes. Chair replies as the second one.
I would like to point out, we are currently in an older meeting, it's a violation. This is in our coordinated days as of today, since May 13th, since our minutes haven't updated. And then with that, I just want to make a statement regarding the minutes. They, while they are detailed, and I appreciate you all's thoroughness in detailing the details of the minutes, they don't identify all regards of everything that's happening in this capacity. So my request is that our minutes, one, are being put up to date since May 13th. And two, that we can have more detailed minutes to have a background of what's happening within the board, the council meetings. Meaning that we don't have a televised session, maybe second or residence, on the quiet moment of what's happening, and providing that the minutes, as I did, will be the email, less than our feedback.
Thank you very much. We are, I would request that the elder men, uh, keep their comments to the scope of what is on the agenda, which is to say vote for the June 13, 2024 minutes. And please, hold commentary or ask questions, once again, with proper due to ask how they've been joining the community meetings and/or isolated into a mayor's office. So I have on the agenda approval of minutes dated June 13th, excuse me, 2024. And the Chair would accept, it looks like we have a motion, line six, four, and the second, line three. Is there any debate? Hearing none, you may cast your votes, and I have 10 seconds to do so. Motion carries. Next, the item is approval of minutes dated June 24th, 2024. The Chair has a motion by the third, and the second by the first. Is there any debate? Hearing none, you may cast your vote. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is number nine. Approval of bills for payment prior to detuse, entertaining. Any motions? Does the Chair for the Finance Committee have a report or recommendation?
Well, we came into, uh, we came into the finance meeting today, but unfortunately, Mr. Wilson was stuck at the end. So we were not able to have a meeting. I would like to call for a whole, the elder men, for a special board meeting of the whole of finance. If that's okay. Maybe for my lady?
We will check with all of y'all, make sure that they have the time available, and try to call a committee hall meeting for finance on that day. Until then, we'll table, uh, both A and B?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any objections to table A and B? Hearing none, we will proceed. To item number 10, approval of coordination resolutions for the City of Harvey, ten A home business, ten B new business. One is a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding for a comprehensive feasibility analysis by and among the City of Harvey and the Killipree Consulting LLC and Core Energy and Infrastructure LLC, Smart City Team. This motion authorizes the Smart City Team to complete a comprehensive feasibility analysis for the purpose of evaluating the potential for smart and sustainable infrastructure upgrades. A C A motion by the third, and second by the second. Is there any debate? Hearing none, you may cast your vote. Motion carries. Next item, two, is a motion to waive competitive bidding to enter contract with Allied Two and Conduit Corporation for repair on Lake Grove Avenue and the amount not to exceed $33,460 and to ratify non-rotating actions of city staff and issuing and curbing and authorizing Allied Two and Conduit Corporation to proceed with repair. This motion authorizes the city to fund additional road improvements on the east northbound side of Lake Grove Avenue by entering into a reimbursement agreement with Allied Two and Conduit Corporation. Looks like they have a motion by the third, second by the second. Is there any debate? Hearing none, you may cast your vote. Motion carries. Next item is three, motion to approve a contract buying between the City of Harvey and Pan Washington Engineering for the 154th Street reconstruction project. This motion authorizes execution of the contract between the service, Pan Washington Engineering Incorporated, and the City of Harvey for the reconstruction of 154th Street. Is there any motion by the second, second by the third? Is there any debate? Hearing none, you may cast your vote. Motion carries. Next item, four, is a motion to approve a settlement agreement between National Carriers of America Incorporated and the City of Harvey. This motion authorizes a settlement agreement to issue a building permit pursuant to violations with MWRD to National Carriers of America Incorporated upon payment of legal fees to the city. There is a motion by the third, second by the first. Is there any debate? Hearing none, you may cast your vote. Sure, we're going to third, four? Motion carries. Next item, number five, motion to approve a settlement agreement by Zone X LLC, BD. Zone X fires can see the party. This motion authorizes a settlement agreement between Zone X fires and the City of Harvey for events that occurred between November 2019 to November 2020. That's the motion by the third, second by the first. Is there any debate? Hearing none, you may cast your vote. Motion carries. Next item, six, is an ordinance authorizing the amendment to certain provisions of the City of Harvey's Title III Revenue and Taxes, Chapter 3 and H34, excise tax on sale of liquor and municipal code. This ordinance authorizes Title III Revenue and Taxes, Chapter 3 and H34, excise tax on the sale of liquor, to be stripped from the Harvey municipal code and its entirety into the known and cited as the City of Harvey Liquor Tax Ordinance. And the tax imposed here in the name shall be known and cited as the Harvey Liquor Tax. Additionally, it will authorize the distributor of the, uh, liquor to collect the tax from the retailer at the time of sale. There is a motion by the third, second by the first. Is there any debate? Hearing none, you may cast your vote. Motion carries.
Next order is 3492. Order is 3492.
Next is number seven, an ordinance amending the City of Harvey's municipal code by amending certain provisions of Title V business licenses and regulations. This ordinance prohibits businesses to offer for sale, sell, or trade items or products outside of the manufacturer's intended packaging. There's a motion by the third, second by the first. Is there any debate? Hearing none, you may cast your vote. Motion carries.
Order is 3493. 3493.
Next item is number eight, an ordinance amending Title III Revenue and Taxes of the City of Harvey called an ordinance, with the adoption of the new chapter... with the exception of the new chapter three dash zero-one for the purpose of establishing fees, fines, insurance, and guarantee requirements. This ordinance authorizes all references to fees and fines in the city code cited in Title III Revenue and Taxes to be stripped and replaced with a reference to Chapter Three Dash Zero-One, the user-friendly list of fees, fines, insurance, and guarantee requirements that may be easily reviewed by the public, elected officials, and city staff. There is a motion by the third and second by the first. Is there any debate?
Yes, uh, I'm gonna go to the other.
This is just for debate?
Yes, this is for debate, and I will say. All the persons, I'm looking, we take a really deep and in-depth look at this ordinance to refer to the Finance Committee for further review. This is an angle call, so increased angle. Uh, we've already gone through a lot of turmoil, uh, as it relates to increased fees. And my, my misunderstanding, as I mentioned to you, Finance Chair Rogers, was some businesses have been offered a settlement agreement where they can pay twenty-five hundred, twelve thousand, or twenty thousand dollars to stay.
We can please, we can please keep our debate to the scope of the city, uh, for this.
This is, this is regarding the scope here, and, uh, I, I can simply answer what you want. Would this is?
This is not a question to answer, this is a debate.
This is, and this is not a debate.
It is whether you support it or you don't support it.
And I'm giving reasons, that's why I don't support it.
Okay.
And the reason why that I don't support it and feel that it is against the Finance Committee because again, there are businesses who are participating in a settlement agreement that started in May of two thousand twenty-four this year. How will this may affect those businesses? Churches are now being considered a business, so will we be raising an increased fee on those churches? In the city of Chicago, that has only fifty-two minister, fifty-two wards across the city and, uh, with over nineteen thousand people, not even in the third of that, they're not even paying these increased fines and fees. What businesses will stay in Harvey at the right we're going? I understand the need to align, um, with the Consumer Price Index. But I also need to have an understanding on the need for adopting this at this very moment without us as all the persons legislatively looking at this particular ordinance to ensure that we're moving in the right direction. I mean, I saw something on here for automotive business for a thousand dollars for a business license fee. Uh, gaming, hotels. And even our very small businesses, like I said, our churches. How will this affect our churches? Uh, the median income average here is twenty-nine thousand four hundred. So it's hard for business owners, um, to pay an increased fee. Good products will maybe sell inside a residence that they'll be able to afford. I really think that we need to refer this ordinance to the Finance Committee and chair, I think, gracefully, a motion while this is happening, and it doesn't have to be taken off the table. It just moves some further directions, some insight, um, some T L C, some tender love up here today. As we're all moving on uphill that we do sense.
Is there any other debate? Chair, last, first four.
Actually, well, I understand what is being said.
Can you give your comments to the chair on that?
Correct. Well, I understand what was proposed. What I like about this particular ordinance is the fact that it's put in one whole new chapter. All the guidelines, so this way when we're looking for the liquor tax, when we're looking for fines, when we're looking for insurance requirements of particular businesses for net profit versus profit, they guarantee that everything is going to be located in one chapter and a user-friendly list of these fines and insurance. So if you know you have a broken window, in your front window, and you have it locked, you can always go to this chapter, three, dash one, and see exactly what your fine is that are most prices versus going through the entire municipality code, kinda going through the schedule. In this part of the state, our, hey, we all know that the current municipality code is, is pretty adept. So I think I'd like the idea with the chapter being all consolidated before you make a decision.
I'm sorry, I want to hear if there's any other debate.
No, I just, I just wanted to comment.
No, 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 second, I'm asking a question. Is there any other ones that want to come in and debate? Back there before we can take, is there a motion to, I'm going to continue debate, or is there a motion to end the debate?
Motion to end the debate.
They will be decided. There's a motion by the sixth, second by the third. All the favor superpowers, they hold that actually, um, not a person, all wrong.
All the person, Rolinski?
The board is incredible, wants to end the debate more, probably.
All the person, Chapman? Love. All the person Smith? All the person? Keen? And all the person, Rogers?
Yes.
Motion carries, again, debate.
As I said, we have a motion on the floor, and the second motion by the third and the second by the, um, first. Debate has ended, so you may, um, cast your votes. Motion carries.
Next order is three, four, ninety-four. Thirty-four, ninety-four.
Next item on the agenda is nine, resolution authorizing street and highway maintenance under provisions of the Illinois Highway Code. This resolution ratifies the use of motor fuel tax funds for the purpose of maintaining streets and highways from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-four. There's a motion by the second, second by the sixth. Is there any debate? Hearing none, you may cast your vote. Motion carries.
That's resolution three, zero, ninety, three, zero, ninety.
Next item on the agenda is Public Comment. Once again, Public Comment is encouraged and appreciated. This is the only other attorney for the public to address the city council on agenda items and any other city-related business. In order to accomplish all business on the agenda and be respectful during this time, prosecutors provide a major dialogue opportunity for members of the audience and open any action when taken on any comment issued. Public Comment is being thundered to the first ten individuals to sign in. This is the first, um, first ever faces, things, then in the comments to remain. Those people who don't think this are her comments or her speaker, commenters shall be courteous and respectful at all times. No person can use Public Comment for the purpose of campaigning or advertising. This is not a question and answer time and counts of palating each conversation of public. Questions and concerns about operations should be addressed at same step during regular business. Um. Can I call your name, or call two names? The first name is to proceed to the podium for Public Comment to be immediately followed by the next next completely ready to speak. First, we have, uh, the word is Joyce. Followed by Chappelle.
You know, last week I had, um, I did, we got a lot of things that I wanted to say. But when I went to church on this Sunday, my pastor spoke about, you know, he spoke about, um, self. And everything he said, um, led me to the city of Harvey. So I'm going to read to you what he said to you, and it doesn't make sense to me. Um, now, we got pastors who, like, yes, you know, when, when God says words, it doesn't make sense to you, but it makes sense to him. So I'm going to read what he put in my heart. Way maker, miracle worker. Primeless keeper, light in the darkness. God sits high, and he sees fools about his business, and he will handle them accordingly. Please do not seek to take vengeance on me for speaking my truth. God said, vengeance is mine. And we confess to the time for their foots shall sweat for the day of their calamity. At the hand in their doom comes swiftly, I am thy child. If man wants to know the truth, he must first change his thinking. The devil will create self-isolated ideas in your mind so that you will exonerate yourself and separate yourself from God. He will dig you down and cut out too long a time. Jesus humbled himself to accept death. We must humble ourselves to accept life. It saddens me to know that we are coming to a time when we don't have to fight the oppressors, but we be oppressed, I'm fighting against each other. It saddens me to believe that when we are bitter, we think that we're bitter than the Creator Himself, and things seem that they're born to be okay. Don't you understand that God almighty, I'm the person, I'm the potent, and I'm the science. There's only one that is everywhere, all-knowing, and has all the power. It saddens me to, to think that today is kind of, we believe that we are in total control of this life. There's only one, and it's not about us. We drain ourselves for the sake of a few. You cannot cast down punishment, only God can. When you are in a position to make value changes and your changes are based on dislikes of a person, guess who is no longer in charge? You. You have folded to the mindset of the person that has made you change your behavior because you dislike them, you have become the weakest one. Our ancestors have fought long and hard to get us to this place of prime deception. And how dare we make a mockery of their blood, sweat, and tears because we are suffering, self-breakout. The devil is using you, and when he's done with you, only God has touched you.
All right. I have this letter here that was put in one of the Harvey papers back during the tenure of Alderwoman Gloria J. Taylor. Not intimidated. In response to the unfounded allegations brought by Charles X. Clarence C. Clark at the Harvey City Council meeting regarding my residency, it is not illegal to own more than one piece of property in Harvey. If anyone wishes to challenge me in a court of law, please feel free. This paid politics and backstabbing is exactly what is holding Harvey back. I refuse to be intimidated by anyone because I will not vote the way they want. I will continue to serve my ward. I will continue to put out the third board newsletter. I will continue to provide senior and youth activity to the third board and more. In closing, if Mr. Clarence X. Clark feels something is wrong, I will see him in court. These are my last words on the subject, Gloria J. Taylor, Harvey. So with her being gone, those words still ring. Because a lot of this politics is paid. Um, so picking back off LaRoyce's wonderful speech, there is a lot of, you're doing this and doing that and saying this and saying that because of dislikes to people. I know I'm one that may be disliked, but do I care? No, because I'm fighting for the people like you all should be doing. And also, I want the people to know that I also found this. Christopher J. Clark, one five seven oh five Page Avenue, Harvey, Illinois. And his date of birth is six twenty-three, nineteen sixty-nine, he's a Democrat. Christopher J. Clark, one five seven oh five Page Avenue, Harvey, Illinois. His birthday is six twenty-three, nineteen sixty-eight. Not specified his party. The last one, Clarence C. Clark, one five seven oh five Page Avenue, Harvey, Illinois. Birthday, six twenty-three, nineteen sixty-nine, and his party, Republican. I wonder why?
Thank you very much.
No, my time is up.
Go ahead, continue. I'm going to give you a second to talk about that.
Okay, thank you very much. But again, like I said, why do you have all these different names, different changes, different birthdays? We have all this, you know, who, so who are you? I got that for y'all. If y'all need it, I got it. Yeah, everything.
I need it, give it to me. I'll turn to all the other, please go get that so that I can see, so I can prepare a proper response when the time requires.
My, I can't get it to, you scattered me the phone.
Next item is Ayesha Pickett, followed by Glens Jales Watson.
Um, beginning everyone, um, we should, we're trying to agree, considering the time. Um, the church report was not included in the agenda on June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-fourth because, again, the mayor has previously responded to my request by instructing me to submit the report to his administration for review prior to the Friday call. However, the church report is not required to be viewed by the mayor or his administration under any state or local statute. Although our offices, our offices are interdependent, they are independent, as the mayor has pointed out, hence not being added to the agenda. In addition, per the corporate council, I am only able to have a floor run of meeting if I am on the agenda or during public comment. Although this seems unnecessarily restrictive to some of you, the unauthorized, unauthorized monthly church report for the period ending May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four is attached and will be submitted to the clerk to be officially included in the meeting. The total available cash, I will not be reviewing every individual account because, because of time constraints. Um, the total available cash in all bank accounts that I have access to is five million, eight hundred fifteen thousand, two hundred thirty-two dollars and seven cents, which includes deposits of three million, nine hundred fifty thousand, six hundred twelve dollars and twenty-two cents, and dispersments of four million, four hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred twenty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents. We also have investments in the Illinois Metropolitan Investment Fund, or IMED, totaling twenty-four thousand, twenty-four thousand, seven hundred thirty-one dollars and sixty-one cents as of April, February, twenty twenty-four. Please note that these numbers are not conclusive, as I am inclined to believe that I am missing vague council statements per conversation with the former finance director and the council. I also have not received the control report for month ending May twenty twenty-four. I also have not received the control report for month ending May twenty twenty-four to compare or verify. Lastly, how did I?
I was trying to get your mic corrected, uh, sir. I was trying to get your mic corrected, uh, let's see, let's see if it's that operational or whatever. And no, it's not, it's continuing.
Lastly, I would like to briefly touch on the misinformation that a certified public accountant or CPA certification is required to qualify for the elected position of city treasurer. As one of our various residents pointed out, there is no state or local statute listing a CPA certification as a requirement. Furthermore, I personally know numerous individuals in the treasurer's slash or finance director position across the state, elected and appointed, who also do not hold a CPA certification. Prior to being elected, I had already earned accounting education and experience. In addition, during my tenure, I have consistently attended the Illinois Municipal Treasurers Association Institute to learn and better understand good financial practices. This making me a candidate to be a certified Illinois municipal treasurer. I am hoping this leads to excellence.
Time is up. Next is Nicholas James Watson, followed by our lead approval team.
For twenty-four council meeting, Mayor Clark put forward a Clark rules of order. Standing by clapping, extending respect, temperate his comments from the audience will not be tolerated during the meeting. However, none of those forms of communication are unprotected by the First Amendment. The categories of unprotected speech include obscenity, child pornography, the fanatory speech, false advertising, true threats, and fighting words. The absence of any speech, verbal or nonverbal, falling into those categories cannot, I'm sorry, that don't fall into those categories, cannot be stifled. Per the, per the ACLU, the First Amendment prohibits governments, government at the federal, state, and local level from banning or restricting speech because they disagree with its content or because they fear others in the community may disagree with it. Banning or limiting speech because others raise objections or government officials disagree is censorship. A person or group cannot deny the ability to host their event in a public space or have special conditions imposed on the event because government disagrees with its content. Thus, so that the city does not meet with another, yet another lawsuit, please don't infringe upon our, our, our First Amendment speech rights, verbal as well as nonverbal. Second, on another note, Alderman Chapman mentioned this, in the annual report, the city finances reports three point two million, a million dollar in miscellaneous appropriations. And I'm wondering, how can that be? To me, that is a reflection of a sloppy accounting setup and poor sloppy accounting procedures or bookkeeping habits. This is yet another example of financial irres- and irresponsibility. Um, another point goes on the bills list, eleven thousand, five hundred and twenty-two one dollars were spent on police uniforms. Why, why repay for their police uniforms? Unless that's part of the bargaining agreement, I don't understand. Most people buy their own uniforms and write off. Um, and the last thing is, Mayor Clark, you had a press release where you said you were going to go before, um, the tax collectors on behalf of the homeowners. And I'm just wondering, if you have that sort of career path, why don't you have that same swag with her for, on behalf of the businesses to collect those taxes? So you can have, you can go before her and on, on behalf of her holding of the, the, um, taxes, tax increase for the homeowners. Why can't you go before her to collect for the business owners who owe millions of taxes? Thank you.
If we want, if we want to figure out how planking is or is not allowed. That is the last time that I will bring this order. If I do it again, I will clear the room. So if you are going to go, you can go ahead and clap now, or I can go ahead and clear the room now, or we can wait what the bottom line is, you will be ordered. Thank you. Next, this is, this is not the time. If there is, there is no further, there is no further order, you are not being authorized by the chair.
I understand.
Madam, you are now ordered. Would you please come, would you please come to order, please? Would you please come? Once again, would you please come to order? Thank you. Next, uh, on the, uh, public comment is colleague Paul Tingle, followed by Pastor Dr. Jonathan Johnson.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Mayor Clark, would you mind letting my family and major to discuss? I have thought about, you know, certain comment that you made at the end of the meeting. You say that your mother would like to move back to Harvey however you told her not to. I was very shocked and surprised that you would say that in front of us. However, as I think about it, perhaps God made you speak your truth of all your own concerns for the lack of progress in the city. With the recent news regarding property taxes, how does the retention bond that will be smacked half in the middle of the city support the current, the missions? That the city currently is in? How does this batch of the middle of the littering support a hundred and fifty-four million dollar deficit? Have you thought about that at all? I really hope this will not be an extra burden to the residents. Because recently me and my father, we just paid our second installment or whatever, so who pays after we leave? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Pastor, Pastor Dr. Johnson, followed by Benicia Johnson.
I think what we tend to get more to public, uh, public, uh, news media. And I want to just state this for the record, that the lies have to stop. There was a lie that the mayor himself actually stated on the news that the only reason why he enforced business licenses was because of him not being able to inspect churches. That's a lie. Even before my tenure at my church, businesses, those churches were actually being inspected. I had no concern because the window stickers are still on our building. So those, that was a lie. You were, and you lied on the news. How dare you, Jewinsky, dare the people, yeah, I'm talking to you, dare the people not to talk and talk to them as though they're in a high school assembly? They're not your children, they're not your students. Mother Teresa, I could not believe a different would sit there and call herself Mother Teresa. And come on, to lady, Mother Teresa out of everything. Now I understood what it meant to empower the people. She knew what it meant to empower the people. Mother Teresa empowered people. She didn't do this. She didn't govern this way. And she wouldn't, I, I can guarantee you she wouldn't condone government being operated this way. Oh, Mr. Tyrone, I'm talking to you, the three hundred thousand dollars that you owe in taxes for your little motorcycle club that you paid the city that money? Because they still need it. And ask for a business license for my church? My church, I'm unbought and unbossed. I don't need a business license.
Chief, you know what? Uh, we can stay in recess. We're clearing the room. Thank you very much. This one's all this, once that's done, you can, uh, speak once that's done. Please everyone escort yourselves if you would be so kind, stage to my left. Chief, please rise tonight.
This is crazy, come on.
What happens if we don't?
Right, we should stay. We, it's our meeting. It's our meeting. Why do we have to leave? Why can't we stay? It's our meeting. This is our meeting. This is our meeting. We should be able to stay. We don't have to go. This is our meeting.
I'm not understanding why we have to leave.
This is our meeting. We should not leave. This is our meeting. Our meeting. And move them. If they have to stay, the rest can keep them. Good job Pastor, good job. He told them. I'm glad he did. Good job Pastor. Absolutely ridiculous. Ridiculous.
Alright ladies and gentlemen, all of the city, you must clear the room, please. Ladies and gentlemen, if you're sitting, you must exit the building. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Crazy, absolutely crazy. They're absolutely crazy.
This is all lightning.
This is not right.
No. Nobody, we're not allowed to leave our meeting. It's our meeting. Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
Find a, a lawyer.
Right. You saw it here first.
Put all of us out.
Okay guys, clear the room, thank you.
That, I guess that's what they want to do, which is crazy. For people clapping? This is, I've never seen that in my life. First time probably thing.
Thank you so much. Clear the room, clear the parking lot.
Yep, you saw it here first, folks. It's crazy. Crazy, crazy, crazy. Crazy, crazy, crazy.
So how they happen to meet without the public?
And she needs to leave. She is a member of the public. She is not a member of the city council. But that's alright, just.
Ms. Ruby?
Yeah.
Yeah, why is she there?
We were just waiting for all the residents to make sure everybody gets out safely.
Can we clear this area? Thank you.
Does she stand?
Start issuing citations.
Is Colby coming out?
I don't know.
I want her to be safe too.
Right.
We don't know what they're gonna do with Colby.
Right. Just come on Ryan, you both Charles, the children.
You can't talk to me?
He's right. He's just asking a valid question. So they're continuing the meeting? I thought they were gonna adjourn. Oh boy. Crazy, absolutely crazy. Are they gonna, um, are they gonna adjourn and then bring us back in or what? Cause I'm wondering. I see here, folks, we're clapping. People were made to leave the public meeting for clapping. Yep, you saw it here first. You saw it here first. Um, I mean, cause there were a few of us still left, but.
Okay, but is everybody coming in or no?
Yeah, are they? Cause isn't, I thought he was gonna have us come back in for the public comment, no? Like everybody? Like why would we give our public comment if it's only in front of the city council?
I do not be given my public comment without support.
Should we give our comments?
No, he said y'all want, y'all, the public.
I can make the public, should I be making the public comment though if it's just me in there?
The whole thing is, you need the support there, right, but.
I mean, I could still make the comment, I guess, but should we?
Yeah, go ahead, do it.
Where's Benicia? Should we go in?
I kinda wanna give mine.
Alright, well, I'll, I'll go talk. I think it's stupid, but it's stupid that people aren't allowed in there to listen, the public, but.
Oh, you can all.
Yeah, they're saying we can go in and comment to an empty room.
Wait, let me make sure, let me make.
That's what he's saying, which I think is totally bogus. We were the commenters, but. Were they gonna bring us back in to finish the public comment, you know? Oh, it was totally adjourned?
But there was so much confusion going on. Who would have known that it was a public comment?
You didn't do it right.
He did call you all names, but everyone was asked to be cleared, so naturally anybody who showed they know the process.
Why don't they just let everybody inside and finish? It's only a few.
Say, I put down here, but you're wasting it. Save it for one time.
Save it for the next meeting? Crazy.
This is very, like, it's later for you all, it's not right, it's unethical, immoral, it's, it's not doing any good for the city. How can we, Robert's rules of order allows for minority voice, voice, and majority vote? You cannot continue to close our mouths. How dare you say we will shut the meeting down or we'll remove everyone if we clap? Since when is a round of applause a deal? Excellent job to everyone during public comment. Very unfortunate that we can get into several others, but you know what, that's okay. Cause once again, we continue to defy the odds and that's all the things we can do. We really can go.
Yeah, I agree with that. We do. Thank you Colby. Oh, yeah. Yes. So I, I knew he'd probably try something, but it, all he, he only had like two commenters left or whatever, like he just should have just chilled, you know? I guess he couldn't contain himself. Oh, good. Yeah, I want to see the last one here, one second. Alright, so who's left in here now? Are these all, just the cops?